Just a quick reminder before we start our meeting, please give us your name even though we can see you, but for the record, please address with your name and then speak so we all know who's talking and let's try real hard not to talk over each other. So when it's recorded, it's better. Okay, I would like to call to order our public hearing Monday, a virtual via Zoom public hearing or via teleconference, Monday, July 13th, 2020, 7:30 PM, and it's virtual. The seating of members, we will seat our regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Jackson, Dave Miller, Alan Johnson, I'm sorry, I knew I was going to do that sooner or later.
It's the first time.
Yeah, I did pretty good, and myself, Jim Conway. Now, at this time, if there's anybody that has seated that has any type of conflict with this proposed regulation for Zone D and feels they need to recuse themselves, this is the time to do it. If everybody feels there's no need to recuse, we're good to go. We have a petition before us by Elliot Davis to amend the Roxbury zoning regulations, section 4.7.9.2b, 20.30 and 20.89 regarding craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries allowed by special permit in business zone D. The legal notice was published in the Voices on Wednesday, July 1st, and on July 8th, The Roxbury zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, EPLA conference. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment on proposed tax amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations as petitioned by Elliot Davis, owner of Mine Hill Distillery LLC, 5 Mine Hill Road, Roxbury, Connecticut. The proposed amendments are to sections 4.7.9.2b, 20.30, and 20.89 regarding craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries allowed by special permit in business zone D. The amendment proposed reflect changes in Connecticut liquor laws to allow by special permit certain aspects of the new Craft Cafe state law license available to liquor manufacturing and limited on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol that is primarily produced on-site. The proposed also allow more flexibility and location of tasting room accessory uses and provide revised definition of alcoholic liquor that may be produced under this special permit in Zone D. This is a general amendment to craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries use standards and is not site-specific for any particular property. If the amendment is adopted, a special permit or special permit modification would have to be granted to carry out any of the new or revised uses allowed by this amendment. The proposed amendments are on file in Roxbury Town Clerk's Office and Roxbury Land Use Office and can be viewed on the Roxbury, Town of Roxbury website. At this hearing, interested persons may access the meeting via Zoom. Roxbury zoning commission, James Conway, Chairman. The Roxbury Town Clerk was noticed June 1st, 2020. Basically, the notice is the same as what I just read, so I will not continue to read it. It's lengthy, but it's the exact same thing. Notice their town clerk. Jim, you want to do the notice to the planning commission?
May I interrupt with a question? Did we not review the minutes and accept the minutes?
That's in the regular meeting, next.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is to Peter Philos, Chairman, Roxbury Planning Commission. This notice was sent June 1st, 2020, and it's, somebody needs to mute. Everyone should mute themselves until they're going to speak.
Yeah, we have a lot of background noise here for some reason.
Yeah, so there's two people on telephone, and you should mute yourself.
Thank you.
So Jim, this says the exact same thing that you just read?
Correct.
So I'm just going to make that note that this was sent to the planning commission on June 1st. There was a response, which I'll read from the planning commission that was sent to the Roxbury zoning commission on June 18th, 2020. At a regular meeting of the Roxbury Planning Commission held June 11th, 2020, the commission reviewed a referral from the zoning commission proposing amendments to the Roxbury zoning relations pertaining to craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries. On May 11th, 2020, the zoning commission accepted petition from Elliot Davis of Mine Hill Distillery to amend Roxbury zoning regulations, sections 4.7.9.2b, 20.30, and 20.89 regarding craft breweries, distilleries, and wineries allowed by special permit in business zone D to reflect changes in the Connecticut liquor laws. The proposed amendments will allow by special permit a Craft Cafe license for the on-premises sale and consumption of alcohol that is primarily produced on-site, more flexibility and location of tasting room accessory uses, and revises the definition of alcoholic liquor. The commission reviewed the proposed text changes and agreed they were compatible with the plan of conservation and development. Thank you for referring proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations to the planning commission for review and comment. Peter Philos, Chairman, Roxbury Planning Commission.
Thank you, and it went to the public notice registry on June 15th of 2020, the same text that we all heard. The public notice registry, Karen has a list that she emails this to, but they were noticed as well. And planning agency Northwest Hills Council of Governments, Jocelyn, and I'll see what we have for a response. Date received, 5/18. Comment from the Northwest Hills Council of Government has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the known concerns of neighboring towns. That was the Northwest Hills Council of Governments. Western Connecticut Council of Governments. Let's see if they've got a response.
I think we got one from all of them this time.
Oh, really? Yeah. Yes, we got one from Western Connecticut Council of Governments. This was, they received this May 18th. Comments starts off with the opinion of West COG staff is that the proposal is of local interest with minimal intermunicipal impact, therefore it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities, and the regional staff is making no comments. Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments. Staff recommendation, Nagatuck Valley Council of Government staff finds the proposed text amendment to Roxbury zoning regulations to be not regionally significant and have no apparent intermunicipal impact. Believe that is all of them.
Yes, it is.
All right. Just do a little housekeeping. At this time, I would open in to public comment. Did we receive Karen John Office? Did we receive any written comments?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. We have some people on the phone. I don't know if they're, would like to comment, but I suppose we have, it appears, we have no public input or questions.
I can comment.
Barbara.
Barbara Henry, first selectman. I am very much in favor of seeing this pass. I think that I go along with what all the COGS have said and that you as a board or commission has looked into and agreed upon, not formally, but I would hope that we would support this and to allow this business to continue to grow along with the state guidelines.
Okay, I think we've given Margaret.
I think it's a good idea, too.
Thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, I think we've given everybody ample time to comment. I would entertain a motion, and once we close this public hearing, there's nothing to be added or discussed.
Elaine Curley here. I noticed that there's a letter from Elliot Davis in the regular packet, but I don't see it here in the packet for special permit. Am I incorrect?
Slightly.
It starts out saying, "I've spent four months working on this project in front of zoning." That letter? I hate to toggle back and forth.
Excuse me, that letter goes with the item that Elliot will present at the regular meeting.
I see. Thank you for.
With his request to amend his special permit, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the public hearing.
I will second Elaine Curley.
Oh, Kim Tester, sorry.
Kim and Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we might as well move right on to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission via Zoom or via teleconference, Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 7:45 PM. Seating of members, we will seat our regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller. Dave, still here?
He may have hit the wrong button.
David, before I seat you, I need to make sure you're with us. I have Kim, Elaine, Alan, and myself.
We should probably each say present.
I'm Cody. Jim, I'll text Dave right now.
Do you think Dave didn't realize that there was a meeting following the hearing?
Well.
No, I think it's by technology.
We got Bill coming on.
It's John, John Cody. I just talked to Dave. He dropped. He's trying to log back in right now.
Okay.
Give him a minute.
Hi, Bill.
Bill, hi, how are you?
Only took me about an hour and a half to get on this thing, but I.
Oh, dear.
I persevered.
Missed a special meeting.
What dedication.
Thank you. Did the Zoom link not work for you?
I was in a document. I needed just to click on it. I had to, it just didn't work with the document.
Oh, sorry about that.
Anyway, here I am.
Bill, you can, in the future, you can cut and paste.
No, I don't know how to do that either, Elliot.
All right, we'll be, we'll be back live and in person at some point.
I may, but I can't.
All right, are we going to move on?
You'll need to seat someone for Dave if you do.
Yes, I know.
But we're going to give him another minute, or?
Yeah, it's only been, we're doing okay.
Jim, John, should I text Dave the phone number to call in in case he can't get the video working?
Sure, try, try anything, yeah.
I'm afraid to go for that because if I click off the screen, I'll probably be just like Dave.
I can, I can, John, I can do it if you want.
You got the number, everybody's got it. There he is.
All righty.
Okay, I'm going again.
Dave, you're back.
Okay, we will start, call to order our regular meeting at 7:49. Seating of members, our regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. Public comment on our regular meeting, we have none. We have the minutes of the June 8th meeting that we need to approve.
This is the May 11th?
No. June 8th.
Oh, did I put the right, put the wrong one in?
I have May 11.
I put the wrong.
No, you put the right one, Karen.
Oh, I did? You have it?
Yeah.
I put the wrong one in my packet.
One mailed out is the right one.
Okay. Oh, the one that went with the agendas, you're great. Apologize for that. That's in error, Kim. It should be June.
I mean, the contents is the same, right? This is what we did last time.
No, June, the June minutes were emailed to everybody, but you accidentally put the wrong one in your packet today.
Oh, God.
I know, sorry.
Okay.
I gotta try going outside.
Put that off till next month.
I was gonna say, do you want to approve these next month?
Yeah, we can do that.
I believe everybody should have the opportunity to review the minutes, the June 8th.
Right.
And if, and if not, all seated members have that opportunity to review, we can table them till next month.
I can read through it in like two seconds, so if it's up to you, whatever you.
Did everyone else see them when they came to the hotline?
Everybody's good.
Elaine is here. Elaine's going to abstain from the minute approval.
Were you not here last month, Elaine?
Correct.
Okay.
And David Miller, I'll abstain. I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I didn't receive a copy of the minutes either. I didn't receive any packet.
No, there were no packets. There was an email to you with the agendas and the minutes that went out last Friday, so that's what I'm talking about. It's in.
I got the agenda, not the minutes.
There should have been two agendas in the set of minutes.
No, but it could have been my fault.
Okay, let's, I'd like a motion to table the approval of the June minute.
That's easier.
So everybody will have the opportunity to read them, and then I want to make sure this is done correctly.
Sure.
I motion to table the June meeting minutes for the next meeting in August.
I second the motion.
Moving.
Alan Johnson.
Okay, thanks, Alan.
Oh, Kim Tester.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, everybody gets a chance, get a chance to read through them, and we will discuss them next time. Thank you. All right, item five, discussion following public hearing, a petition by Elliot Davis to amend zoning regulations pertaining to craft breweries. And does anybody, this is basically a regulation for the, obviously, the entire zone. It's not specific to any one property, just right now. It is by special permit to apply for. So right now, it's just relatively simple for Zone D.
Kim Tester, I'm in favor of moving along with it. I think it brings it up to the state. You know, it's the state require or opportunity to make this adjustment, and I think we stay in line with what the state proposes.
I'd like to, so this goes with the land. This, this special permit goes with the land?
This isn't a special permit.
No. I mean, the amendment.
This goes with the entire Zone D.
Okay.
The entire business zone D. Alan?
I, I think it's, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. I think it goes along business district and within the rules of the state of Connecticut. They seem to think that this is a normal expansion or use of that type of business, so I'm in favor of it.
And I also am in favor because my reasoning is breweries and wineries have been doing this since they started. They've always had the opportunity to sell their product, and what this is doing is allowing distilleries to be on the same playing field as breweries and wineries to sell the product they produce, and it's part of the, the business. And so I'm in favor of it.
May I? Well, when you're done, are you done, Jim?
Go ahead, Elaine.
Okay, Elaine Curley. I would like to acknowledge that this allows for not only breweries and wineries and distilleries, this potentially becomes the function of a restaurant where food can be brought in to be served, as in Woodbury Brewing Company. Woodbury Brewing Company has partnered with a new list, so that all the foods serve, you can order food, and it can be brought in, and people can sit and hang out and listen to music and buy the alcoholic product. Is everybody aware that this, what, what we are amending could allow for a full functioning night spot, restaurant, et cetera? I just want to clarify because I missed last month.
Right, basically, my understanding is the state requires food to be available or nearby. That can be anything, a bag of chips to a pizza. Food has to be part of this serving of alcohol.
Yeah, I just, I'm asking if the commission understands what this potentially can look like. It ceases to be a distillery and allows for it to become a multifunctional venue.
We've got, this is by special permit, and some applies for this.
Yeah.
In the application for this, within the special permit, we will pretty much lay out the groundwork as to what we're going to allow, where we're going to allow it, and how we're going to allow it.
Okay.
Jim, am I allowed, am I allowed to talk?
Sorry, Elliot, no, this is our meeting now. The public comment part is over.
I was just going to point people to the last sentence of 20.
Elliot, now, next month, when you come with your special permit application, we will ask you a lot of questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Jim, David Miller?
David.
Yeah, I think it was quite clear earlier on that the state mandated food would be there, and either they could bring in food. And I have a problem with that. I had to eat if you're going to have a drink, and I, I don't have a problem if, if someone later on in another place such as Donna Rag Brothers were to have a restaurant that served alcohol. I just, you know, I've, I've eaten dinner in Woodbury and New Milford and Southbury, a different place.
We're kind of losing you, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think every, every application's going to be slightly different. If there's going to be, like Elaine's concerned, there would have to be kitchens, and we don't have a kitchen, not everyone's going to have a kitchen. It's going to be somewhat regulated as to their facility as far as food.
David Miller's gone.
David's gone.
We have to wait till he comes back. We have to wait till he comes back or.
Yeah, at least getting back to, so we can take a vote. John, can you get on this again for us? Oh, John's muted, too.
I heard you, Jim. I texted him. I'll give him a buzz right now just to make sure.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Oh, Dave, I just called him. Dave, John, Dave said he's trying again. He could drive over here if you wanted to jump on or something, or is it easier for him to call in? I don't know what would be the best.
Well, I don't know the legalities, but all our alternates have listened to the whole thing, start to finish. I think I could seat an alternate in his place.
Do you have enough people to take a vote? You have over a quorum, so you could vote and just leave him absent for the moment, maybe?
We've got four of us. That's a quorum.
Yeah, that might be cleaner. That's Kim.
Anyway, you feel you want to do it, we can go with the four of us.
I think we know his vote anyway, so if you guys want to hold your vote and I could tell him to drive over here and he could jump on, it's not like it's gonna be.
Why doesn't he just get on, call in on the phone and skip the video part?
Yeah, does someone have the phone number?
Yep. You ready?
Yeah, firewire. All right.
Hi, Candy, he needs the meeting ID number though, right?
I don't think so.
We have to talk Laura into hanging around to help him every time he needs to get out. Two heads are better than one.
You should have it. I texted him and went through. Let's see.
All right. I'm, uh, I think we'll entertain a motion for the, to amend or for the petition for Zone D. And we'll just go with the four of us.
So are we voting on 477?
Correct. It is 4.7.9.2B. Addition, yeah. Alcohol beverages produced on site may be provided as free tastings with or without note, and blah, blah, blah. All, I'll make a motion to.
Jim, I'm got on now finally.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the regulation for Business Zone D.
You have to state the section numbers or anything?
Yep.
4.7.9.2B and definition 20.30 and definition 20.89.
Okay, may I interrupt, please, Elaine Curly? The page I'm looking at, page, am I on five or six? Because it's saying Regulation 4.7.7, 2A, 2B. Karen, can you help me out? Am I on the wrong page completely?
I'm taking this from the public notice.
Okay, so I'm in the regular meeting. The page, page five is telling me Minehill Distillery Modification of Special Permit Application Statement of Use.
That's not it.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, so.
That's what I was talking about. Elliot's gonna present tonight.
Okay, but what Jim is saying, I don't have that paperwork in front of me.
That was in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
The amendment to the zoning regs. It's a full page with a lot of red on it.
Yep, I did read it, but I didn't see it in the, I have to go back.
Yeah, it's in the public hearing material, sorry. I know it's a little confusing because there's two different things we're doing.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just a little, so. Thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
All right, so, this is Kim. So you made the motion?
I made the motion, yes.
I'm going to second.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? I believe we pretty much gave, Karen, we pretty much gave our reasonings earlier. So I think we're good to go.
I didn't. I guess I have to add my reason that I find no obvious reason to oppose it according to the regulations.
Okay.
It probably would be better if we just ran through that again, I think.
Okay. All right.
We have one dissenting vote.
Kim, reason?
Yeah, this is Kim Tester. I am in favor because it's good for business, but also it brings it up to the Connecticut state statutes and their regulations. I think it's bound to follow suit and be current.
Thank you. Elaine?
I have voted in for it because I can, I've looked at the regs. I've looked, there's no obvious reason for me to decline it.
Thank you. Alan?
It seems to be a reasonable request and it it kind of clarifies and makes it a more viable business.
Thank you.
Viable proposition.
David?
It seems to me to be a reasonable request for a business that is in the business zone. And I think it will be an asset to the town of Roxbury to have a business that's successful. But I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. And I, I as well am in favor of the regulation for Business Zone D. It just brings a distillery up to the same playing field as breweries and wineries. Okay. Karen, I would say that's unanimous.
I would agree.
Thank you. That was item five pertaining to craft breweries. Now, at this point, we have an application by Minehill Distillery for a special permit to amend this special permit to allow him to exercise right and sell alcohol for consumption. And what we do tonight is accept and the application, the statement of use, site plan, we're gonna forego because we've seen it numerous times and parking has not changed. I don't have, Karen, you have the statement of use in front of you?
I can flip back to it, yes.
Okay, and we've got all the notices for, do we have notices? We haven't noticed yet this.
No, you know, if we choose to accept this tonight and then establish a public hearing date,
Then you'll notice, yeah.
This will start to be sent out again.
Okay. But you have everything that's needed for this evening, the application complete for us to accept.
I believe we do. We've got his amended application. We have a cover letter introducing the the complete idea of what are we supposed to do. And then we have an amended statement of use. And the fee has been paid.
The fee has been paid. Okay, I've got, Karen, I got one question before we go forward. In the statement of use, are the hours listed for tastings as well as consumption on site?
You all have a copy of it in your packet, but let me just skim it quickly and see if I can answer that. Tastings can be offered daily from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 11:00 a.m. starting on Sunday is what it says.
Elliot, did you submit the one we discussed?
Yeah, right afterwards to you and to everyone else. So it actually reads tastings and on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol can be offered daily from 10:00 to 8:00 or 11:00 to 8:00. So that was sent to you guys right after we.
On Friday.
Right. And it was highlighted.
Correct. So Karen, do you have that one?
I don't believe I was, I don't believe I grabbed that one.
Let me, I hope I don't lose you. I'm gonna jump off and make sure Karen, you got it.
Elliot, you amended that and sent it to me again on Friday?
I did after my talk with Jim to just be more explicit.
Sorry, I did not see that.
No worries. Let me just see if I can get it to you.
Or if I saw it, I didn't realize it was different than what you had sent me earlier. Could you tell me what section that amendment's in, Elliot? Is it under 2B?
Yes, it is. It's just the last bullet point. And it inserts the language, so it reads now tastings and on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol can be offered daily from 10:00 to 8:00 or 11:00 to 8:00 on Sundays. Correct. So Karen, so I sent it on Friday, the 10th, to you, Jim, Karen, and John. And Karen, I'll forward it to you again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the one, Karen, that's gonna go with the application.
Okay, got it.
Karen, it's just, it's gone to you at this point.
And that's the only change is.
That was the, it's, oh, shit, how do I get back?
I'll get that corrected.
Okay, I lost the video, but I can hear everyone, so I'm just gonna keep it at that.
We can see you.
We can still.
We can still see you, yeah.
Oh. I can't. That's scary.
All right, so everything seems to be in order for the commission to go forward and accept this application for a special permit and to schedule a public hearing, which we can schedule for the August meeting. Do I have a motion to accept this application?
This is Kim Tester. I motioned to accept the application from Minehill Distillery for a special permit.
Do I have a second?
David Miller, David Miller, I second the, yeah, application.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to accept the application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we accepted it. I believe now I could use a motion to schedule a public hearing for our August meeting.
This is Elaine Curly. I move to create a public hearing for the August meeting of the Recreary zoning commission for the consideration of regulation 4.4.7 and the special permit to the distillery.
Do I have a second?
Date of that is August 10th, by the way.
Thank you.
August 10th. And do I have a second?
This is Kim Tester. I'll second.
Jim, thanks.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing pertaining to this application, August 10th.
Excellent, and I'll make sure I make the change in the language.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you, guys. You don't need me anymore, do you?
No, we're good.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Elliot.
Hey, Elliot, thank you.
Bye.
All right. The CEO report, done.
All right. I'll go brief, as always. I'll start with the oldest first, Mark Lowes screening. I reached out to him and he got back to me saying that he is gonna put up a fence, sent me a picture of some, that he's gonna have milled for it, so at least we got some sort of progress with that. On that same note, I received an email from Dennis, Donald, his neighbor, inquiring about taking out a permit to finish the second story of his garage/storage. He's gonna respond to me. He said I'm gonna get an email from him complaining more, so we'll wait and see what that has to bring. Another one, the garage 84 wellers originally came to me. It was, just say it, it was massive. And I had issues with it because two things, one, Julie's husband's building it and I had concern about the, what that would look like if it was approved. I brought that up to Ed. I told him about the size and the scope of the thing, that it may be controversial, something like that. And they revised it and they brought it back. So right now, the garage stands at 2,900 square feet, parking for four cars. It's big, but it's smaller than a main house. I don't really have an issue with signing off on it at this point, but I wanted to bring your guys, to your guys' attention.
Is that the colonial on the left going down the hill?
You really can't see. It's behind the gates. Down on the left-hand side.
Okay.
And then originally, they had it close to the road. They moved it back. I don't, I don't see any concern. The first one was basically 80 feet long, closer to the road. It was big. Now they're at 77 feet, but they took off the second story, took off a whole bunch of stuff to it, so it's, it should work just fine. Last but not least, I got an email today about a complaint against Mike Rice. I haven't been up there. I was gonna swing up there later on this afternoon, but the day got away from me. Apparently, he has an open and closed sign for when he's doing business. He'll put up an open sign, block his driveway, and the cars park on the road. The complainant said that they come over the hill, there's cars in the road, people don't get out of your way. They're rather upset about it. And they made allegations of all sorts of activities that are going on in all these different little buildings that he may have erected or something like that. So that's gonna start my morning tomorrow. Within the last, within this month or last month, we had three new home applications. It's busy. There's a lot of property being turned over, a ton of inquiries about property that has been bought and sold, what they can do with it as far as accessory structures and stuff like that. Again, we thought last year was good. This year should be a record number for permits and. Again, we thought last year was good. This year should be a record number for permits and applications and all that stuff. It's really kind of crazy down there. Hopefully understood all that. It kind of ran along pretty quick.
That's good. Thank you. Yeah.
Good.
It's good to hear that things are getting taken care of with Mark and Dennis and all that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, slowly.
Slowly, but it's going in the right direction.
Wheels of justice turn slowly, right?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Don.
I can verify what Don is saying because as soon as I clean up a pile of permits, John gives me another pile. It's been quite.
All right, we'll continue on.
Excuse me, Jim, can you hear me? This is Ed Cady.
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to let you know I was on the call. John, did you have any questions for me regarding that application for Mr. Swaya for 85 Wallers Bridge?
Uh, now's not the time to talk about that. I mean, that's, yeah, I have the application. You're going to wetlands. Like I said, I'm going to sign off on that.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make, I didn't, I didn't say that. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. I said that I have no problem signing off on it now because it's smaller. It's back. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Okay. Item eight on the agenda, we'll keep discussing this, but ongoing review of zoning regs pertaining to adaptive reuse of non-conforming barns and accessory apartments. And this is something we started looking into back in January. We'll take non-conforming barns. I just kind of kicked this around in my own head. A lot of these barns are perpendicular to the highway, the road. So the non-conforming portion in quite a few of these large barns is the smaller portion. And so it's a 120-foot barn and there's actually 20 feet of it that's non-conforming. In 100 feet of it, that same barn is behind the 50-foot setback and is conforming. And I wasn't sure if the commission thought that this would be helpful to owners to allow them to use the conforming portion for other uses. Right now, a non-conforming building can only be used for its intention and storage. So if it was a farm building, it can be used for farming or storage. It can't, it's not supposed to be converted to studios or apartments. And I wasn't sure if the commission wanted to look into addressing the conforming portion of these barns and allowing the people to do something with them.
This is Kim Tester. I think that the zoning regulations need to come up to modern times and because those properties aren't necessarily farming any longer, that the barn will go into disrepair unless it's allowed to be upgraded and brought into some sort of use that the current property owners will be able to manage and move forward.
Right, that's kind of what my feelings are the same, that to save some of these barns and it would create, because I'm going all the way to accessory apartments in the conforming portion of the barn to allow people to, to utilize that structure, the conforming portion. The non-conforming portion of that barn has got to be left just as it is, storage or nothing. Jim?
Jim, Dave Miller.
Alan, first, then Dave.
Seems to me well, why not just allow the entire barn to be, put in, put to a different use? Because.
My concern on the entire barn, a lot of the portions that are with, within the 50-foot setback, some of these are like 10 feet from the road.
I understand that, but what are they, 20 buildings, 30 buildings in the entire town or 50 or?
Oh, we don't, I don't have a number. I just thought there is a safety issue on allowing the non-conforming portion, which is close to the road. I was trying to avoid a safety issue of having that become used for, you know, population, people living or studio.
You worried about a truck plowing into the thing or?
Pretty much, yeah.
I, I see old communities where all of the houses are three feet from the, from the road.
Well, we're trying to avoid that in our community.
Yeah. But I, I, it seems to me a barn, if you were to convert a barn, I, I see some barns in when I drive along and that are very close to the road and there are houses and people have, the houses have been that close to the road for 150 years.
But currently, currently to me, a setback is sacred and there is a reason we have a 50-foot setback and I don't want to.
I understand the reason, but that's for new construction, but this is an existing building. And if they want to turn it into a dance hall or a house, I mean, whatever.
Well, there's, there's other structures too, that when I said some of these barns are perpendicular, I also have a barn up on Bossford Hill that's parallel with the road. The barn is close to 170 feet long. The entire structure is within 50 feet of the road.
And if people want to turn that into a house and live that close to the road, I am.
No.
I don't know. Nice house, it'd be big.
Can't do that. This one, this one I'm talking about is about eight feet from the side of the road. Wouldn't even have room to park there safely. But I think if we're going to allow either, we got to stick with our, the conforming portion. And the other thing, some of the barns that, my personal feeling is it's got to have at least 50% conforming. Because it's only, if it's got 60% non-conforming and 40% conforming, it's not worth going there. I want the, the barn to have the majority of it conforming and then we'll allow them to use the majority. Just my thoughts.
Okay.
Yep. Jim, this is Elaine. I, I think we've been, we've kicked this around for a couple of months, right? Top, this topic?
Well, we started in January, then it, it lost us in March, April. But.
I'm in favor of discussing it.
You know, just to allow them to use the part, to me, it's important, the part that is conforming, to give them some leeway to use that for whatever they want to use it for. Anyway, so that's where we're at with that. And I, next month, I want, and Bill, you can weigh in on this. My prof, my building representative, you know, help us out with your thoughts.
Well, my concern would be the 100-foot barn, which I may, and my concern would be sensitivity to the side limits, because those are people, those are new houses. The road doesn't really care how close the structure is to what is already there. So, but reoccurring in my mind, your 170-foot structure, that's quite a dynamic structure alongside a road. It could be a living structure. And so I'm, I, I kind of admit the logic of the model. I think that, well, as I was going to say, I'm hung up on the fact that side limits are sacred. The street is also a sacred, but it's not sacred personally. It's just sacred to a road. And the road doesn't really have any opinion or feeling for what's happening in the structure. If safety is an issue, then that can't be argued.
Right. Now, a lot of these are very close, especially in winter, you're plowing snow, you're plowing this one structure I have, the snowbank goes right up to the barn.
Well, that's true, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of things that enter into it. The 50-foot is there for a very good reason.
You know, that 50-foot, that, that snow, that snowplow would still be against the building that's there. That would have nothing to do with what's inside the barn.
No, it would make it harder to get out.
So I'm just, I really believe the sideline, the sides of it actually be really sacred.
Definitely.
And if you use the 50% that you're talking about, then that long building that you have could never be any more barn.
I can't understand you that well. We'll talk.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk. I can't. There's background somewhere. Anyway.
Dave's phone.
Okay. The other one, the other one I want to.
Yours, this, mute your phone and then we hear a lot of background noise for you.
Who's phone is that, Kim?
Dave.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it is, yeah.
One last thing. Along those lines is the accessory apartments and the size. What do we want to call a proportion?
Proportion, ratio?
Rate, size ratio to the, the residents, the primary residents. And the accessory has to be 50% of the primary.
Up to 50.
Yeah.
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 This is Elaine here. I just want you, let you know, I was absent last month, but not only did I read the minutes, but I listened to the entire audio. So it sounds very complicated.
Well, right now, I can put it simply, my house at home is 1,800 square feet. My accessory can't be bigger than nine.
Correct.
Okay, so then.
And the way it is currently, yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not going to build an accessory apartment on my property out, you know, separate from the primary. A separate living, because I can only go to 900 square feet. So then if I wanted to change and build a primary and call my 1,800 accessory, my primary's got to be 3,600 square feet. So anybody with a house around 18 to 2,200 square feet is out of luck. And we're trying to change that to where I can, I have 1,800 square foot house. I would like to build another 1,800 square foot house or a 15 or whatever.
I hear you.
That's where I'm going with this. And there again, to create more options for housing.
Well, I had some questions because I listened to Kim's remarks about the the, the footprint space versus the square footage. So I was a little, that was interesting.
Yeah, this is Kim. So when my husband and I built our house, the regulations at the time said footprint. So they were amended later on to say square footage. So when we did it, we have a 1,500 square foot little house that we were in and then we wanted to build a primary. And we had to build a 3,000 square foot house. And now there's, it's, we're kicking ourselves now, but and that was a stretch that was really hard for us to do. And so I think that the regulation as it stands now is very limiting and it's, it's unfair. As Jim said, who have houses that are within the 1,500 or whatever, because it's too small or it's too big. A proposal to John. John, I don't know if you have that. I don't think it made it into the, into our packet, but for the email I sent with the proposed language or?
No, John, no, Kim, I didn't get that.
Oh, okay.
Jim, definitely send that, send your proposal in so we can all see it.
Yeah, please, John, anyone, anyone has an idea, throw it in.
Yeah.
Put it in an hopper.
That's the, that's the problem we want to solve. Any way you folks think we can get to it, read what we have on the books now and see what we can do to make it so the accessory and the primary don't have to be that far apart.
Jim, this is Bill. Elaine's made a good point. It's a very complicated thing the way it is now. If we try and rework it and change it, it's still going to be complicated. John, I don't know, in my random research of other towns, John Cody, you've probably done some too, lots of towns. A maximum size, maybe 1,600 or 1,800 feet, period. That's the maximum size. And it does say the accessory building has to be smaller than the main house, but if we just, if we just had a maximum size.
Okay.
Bill, Bill, that, that sounds sensible to me.
Yeah.
You can go up to 90, well, let's say 90% of the original house or 95%. And.
Jim, Dave Miller.
Yeah.
I, I think that, Alan, you're missing the point. I think they just have a size on the accessory building regardless of the size of the primary residence. Just pick a size that, that would fit the, you know, what everyone would be a good accessory sized building, something 1,300 square feet, 1,200 square feet. And. All right, 1,800.
I, I agree. I think we just put a size on it.
It's John, John Cody. That's, that's a good idea.
I, I like it.
I like that a lot.
It's very simple and.
Yeah.
I, I did, I think it was Co-zer Banker, they, I think they have group called HOUZZ. And they did a lot of research on this and they, they said that, and they call it their Goldilocks house. Ideal size house for a family of four with dogs is 1,600 to 1,800 feet. So.
What was that again, 1,800?
The average sized house, ideal house for a family of four with two dogs is 1,600 to 1,800 feet. That sounds, that sounds realistic, reasonable.
Yeah, 18.
Say 17, you know, they said 16, 18, but.
Yeah.
Sounds fair and reasonable and very simple.
Yep. That would help. That would help encourage people to do something like that.
Yeah, and there would never be a huge structure built again.
Exactly.
It would be a decent size.
What's wrong with 1,600-foot houses?
John, that's, it's clean. There's no difference, there's no gray area with that.
And this, this is also just for rentals. These aren't to be sold, these are rentals.
Oh, no, it's not going to be a subdivision. It's not a subdivision event.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very rentable size.
Yep. Well, with the, the regulation, it's my understanding that you can't rent both units out. That an owner has to be in one unit and the secondary unit you can do whatever you want with.
Correct. That, that we might look into as well.
Yeah. It's, it's, this is Elaine. That's, that's a lot to, to break off and chew at the same time, because that really changes the, it changes what we've got completely. And, and it could potentially pose a problem if there, if it's not a residence. If there's not a residence of the owner.
All right, well, let's.
I mean, this, this COVID was a perfect example. Anybody in Roxbury could have rented their house out for three months.
So what's your point? Seriously go forward with the size of the accessory house. 17, 18. I don't think we need to go over 18. And see how that looks written into our regs to allow that to go forward and happen. Then we'll take another step from there.
Keep it simple is the name of the way to do things.
I'm all for that, yep. All right. Bring that back next month and something in writing that we can all look at. Chairman's report, that's pretty much pretty much it, just those two issues for me. It's always thinking on housing and what we can do to encourage diversity in housing. All right, anything else? We've been on here for a while. Anything else the commission wants to bring up?
I have one thing. This is Kim. And that I think with the changes that we've made, I'm with the apartment in the house and the apartment in the building, we should really look at the guest house regulation, which I think is absolutely. and the apartment in the building, we should really look at the guest house regulation, which I think is absolutely. The guest house, I think that once people are, I think a lot of those guest houses have kitchens in them now and all of those apartments. I think it's something to think about and to remove that proposal to the guest house regulation.
I agree with that, Kim. Actually, a lot of times these people come in for a guest house, I tell them to just go for the apartment. It's, it's a hell of a lot easier, you know, most people are receptive to that. That would be nice to get rid of that, because that is a lingering nightmare.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's, let's talk, look at that. I've gotta look at the rig myself, guest houses. They just don't have kitchens.
That's correct, Kim. It's just.
Size limitation.
Microwave and all that, but no stove.
How about the size of a guest house?
Uh, no.
Nothing on size?
No, no, I'm sorry. No, there is, there is, um, Jimmy, you stumped it. I don't know if there is.
Because it's odd that we have a size on the accessory apartment, but not on a guest house.
Exactly. I mean, it's always been small. The only thing that's coming to me is a special permit that just got approved, which has the entertainment room, didn't just get approved last year, several years ago.
I don't think we have a size restriction on guest house.
Yeah, we can, we can, this is Kim. You can take a look at that and talk about it lots of times.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? If we're all good, I'll.
This is Elaine. I make a motion to wish Karen Eddy a happy birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday, Karen.
Thank you. Do I have to write that in?
All right, I think we're good. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
This is Kim Tester. I motioned to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Elaine Curly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good month.
Happy birthday, Elaine.
Happy birthday.
Good meeting, thank you.